Good afternoon and welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission's May 4, 2003 open session. Ms. Costa, can you please take the roll call?
Certainly. Commissioner Steingasser?
Here, present.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Argo?
I'm here.
Thank you. Commissioner Hewlett?
Here.
Thank you. Chair Goodman?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Green?
Here.
Commissioner Wright?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon?
Present.
Commissioner Cash?
Present.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Thank you. I'll also note that Marcela Costa, the Executive Director, Anne Skyler, the General Counsel, and Diane Sullivan, Head of the Urban Design and Plan Review Division are also in the meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Costa. In noting the presence of a quorum, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Today's meeting is being livestreamed, and it will be available in a few days on video or as video on the NCPC website. If there's no objection, the agenda as posted is adopted as the order of business. And we will play a short clip right now of the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Indivisible, liberacy, and justice for all. Thank you. The National Capital Planning Commission will continue to conduct our meetings online until renovations are complete in the commission chambers. I want to share how we will be conducting commission business. Following staff presentations and any additional testimony, I will ask for a motion and a second as appropriate. During commission deliberations, I will use the round robin format to ask each commissioner if they have any comments or contributions. As a reminder, during the deliberations, all commissioners should be on video at that time unless you're experiencing technical difficulties. And at other times, when commissioners wish to be recognized, please unmute and just ask to be recognized. Our specific bylaws state that each spring the commission will elect a vice chair to serve for that year, as well as approve of a third member of the executive committee as recommended by the chair. The executive committee meets every month to set the agendas for our commission meetings. And I have asked Commissioner Hewlett, if she is interested in serving as vice chair, and she's answered affirmatively, then I'm grateful to her for her willingness to volunteer her service in this way to the commission. And I would accept a motion to approve Commissioner Hewlett as vice chair of the NCPC. Is there a motion? Thank you. Commissioner Dixon, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Argo. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Costa, could you please confirm the motion and the second and take a roll call vote?
Certainly. Commissioner Dixon made the motion and was seconded by Commissioner Argo. With that, Commissioner Steingasser?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewlett?
Yes.
Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
And Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. The motion and second have carried, and Commissioner Hewlett will serve this year as vice chair. Congratulations, Commissioner Hewlett. And do you have a few words you'd like to say at this time or?
The only thing I would like to say is, first of all, Madam Chair, thank you so much for your trust in me. And thank you to our fellow commissioners for your support and the trust that you have in me as well. I aim to serve, and I'd like to acknowledge Vice Chair Arrington Dixon that I have big, big shoes to fill. And I had hoped that I can come close to filling his shoes. I probably will never fill them completely. But I wanted to thank Commissioner Dixon, Vice Chair Dixon, and also for his nomination. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hewlett. And I do want to say that I have also thanked Commissioner Dixon for his services vice chair. And I'm asked if he's willing to serve again on the executive committee as a third person so that we can maintain some institutional knowledge. And we're looking forward to working together as the executive commission for the Executive Committee for the NCPC. So I would like to ask if there is a motion to approve Commissioner Dixon as a third member of the executive committee.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Costa, can you take the vote, please?
Certainly. The motion was by Commissioner Hewlett. The second was by Commissioner Steingasser. And with that, Commissioner Steingasser?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hewlett?
Yes.
Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
And Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Costa. And the motion has carried. Commissioner Dixon will serve as a third person on the executive committee. And I want to congratulate Commissioner Dixon and ask if you have any comments that you'd like to share.
Just to thank you for my ability to continue to serve in this role. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your continued service. Okay, the next agenda item number four is Report of the Chair. And I'd like to report that I had a great hike yesterday, and I met with Catherine Townsend and Teresa Durkin from the Trust for the National Mall to discuss the Beyond Granite program and to thank them for their partnership on behalf of the commission. We discussed some of the details and the ongoing planning, and it continues to be a tremendously exciting project even for a person like me, a newcomer to the NCPC. It's edifying to know that the commission has had the vision to expand our offerings to the public in terms of our retelling of American history. And I think this Beyond Granite model is going to be replicated across the country. And I just think it's terribly exciting, and I look forward to celebrating with all of you someday when we are in town together and hopefully participate in this innovative and wonderful project that we're engaged in with our partners at the Trust for the National Mall. So I had a very good visit, and I'm looking forward to more visits in the coming months. I'm taking time each month to come meet with other commissions and partners that we have in the district and joining counties. So that was a very good meeting, and I'm grateful to the staff for helping to set those up. And then, most importantly, this is Commissioner May's last meeting. And I just want to say that, you know, I am new to this exclusive club. But I think Commissioner May has been a leader, a passionate advocate for the spaces, the special spaces we have in the federal buildings and properties. And I just want to say, Commissioner, we're grateful that you've been with us this long. I'm certain I speak for many other commissioners who have come and gone. But we're grateful to you for your service, and you have left a great legacy here. So I'd like to ask Ms. Costa if she would be willing to read a resolution that we have regarding Commissioner May. And if there's no objection, the resolution will be approved.
Thank you, Chair Goodman. Whereas Peter May served as an alternate for the Secretary of the Interior to the National Capital Planning Commission for more than 15 years with his first meeting in February 2008. Whereas Commissioner May is retiring from the National Park Service after providing many years of invaluable public service, culminating as the Associate Regional Director, Lands and Planning, National Capital Region. Whereas he provided invaluable guidance as a member of NCPC's executive committee during most of his tenure on the commission. He came to NCPC meetings well-prepared, digging into project details while looking holistically at proposals, and sought to advance a sustainable, beautiful, and accessible capital. Whereas he was a strong advocate for solutions that promoted walking, biking, multimodal transportation, better accessibility, and less parking. He biked to meetings. Whereas he consistently advanced the commission's review of National Park Service proposals, working with his colleagues to ensure submitted projects were complete, thoughtful, and supported NCPC policies, including the renovation of Franklin Park and Meridian Hill Park, major improvements to the CNO Canal, to Anacostia Park and Rock Creek Park. Whereas his understanding of the complex design, planning, and development issues associated with developing major federal facilities and campuses in urban environments positively shaped the commission's review of major master plans and projects, including the Southeast Federal Center, the Navy Yard, and the new Federal Reserve Campus, and balancing the important goals of security, access, and urban design at projects including the White House, Lafayette Park, and the U.S. Department of Commerce building. Whereas Commissioner May was instrumental in shaping and stewarding the Capitol's commemorative landscape, partnering on the Beyond Granite Initiative, helping to secure funding and partnering on the Joint Memorials Trends Report, advising on the Memorials for the Future Ideas Competition, serving as Chair of the National Capital Memorial Advisory Commission, and helping to review site and design of more than 30 memorials during his tenure, such as the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., President Dwight D. Eisenhower, National World War I, and Desert Storm and Desert Shield memorials. Whereas he fostered NCPC's partnerships with NPS to protect, preserve, and increase access to the National Capital Region's parks and civic and open spaces through development of the Capital Space Plan, leading the Small Parks Management Plan, and advising on NCPC's Public Space and Security Initiative and updates to the Comprehensive Plan's Parks and Open Space Element. Whereas Commissioner May played a key role in protecting federal interests in Washington's form and character on the Hightmaster Plan for Washington, DC, and through major updates to the 2016 update of the Comprehensive Plan's federal elements, including a new urban design element. Whereas he was instrumental in NCPC's work on the Southwest Eco District, which laid the foundation for improving Banneker Park and its connections to the Southwest waterfront, and advocated to make Independence Avenue more pedestrian-friendly. Whereas Commissioner May was an effective leader who helped advance the Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative, always supporting quality programming, enduring design solutions, and improved stewardship. Therefore, be it resolved that on May 4, 2023, the members and staff of the National Capital Planning Commission recognize Peter May for his 15 years of dedicated service as commissioner. Further, commissioners and staff express their sincere appreciation and thanks for his many years of public service to Washington, DC, and the nation, and wish him much happiness and success in his future endeavors. He will be missed.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Yes, Commissioner Dixon?
I would like to join in acknowledging Peter. We've been through his whole stint with me, and he fills some big shoes of John Parsons'. Shoes that some folks felt could never be filled, but he did, and did a great job. I also appreciate not only his work and his detail and his focus, but also the ability for me to call him on the phone with some of my interests and concerns related to commission and his willingness to cooperate and share things with me. So at both a personal and professional and commission level, he'll be missed greatly. And as I told him earlier, his presence will still be felt because his impact has been great on us and our thinking, and that will go on forever. Thank you, Peter, for everything, and good luck in all you do. Look forward to seeing you around the community. Take care. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Any others like to chime in and wish Commissioner May best wishes?
Yes, I would. I would. Although I've already spoken to Peter in person, and I got all choked up, so I'm going to keep it very brief. When we first met, he had hair, and I was a brunette. And that seems a long, long time ago now. Because it was. We started out at the Building Museum, and true to form, we started out bickering. Because he was the business manager, and I was the curator, and I wanted things that were essential to get, ironically, from GSA. And here we are now, 35 years later, and we started out bickering and disagreeing. And we sort of ended up bickering on the commission a little bit. But while, most of the time, we agreed. But even when we didn't, I have always respected his judgment and his opinion. And I really am going to miss bickering with Peter May. And may just have to hunt him down, and so we can continue bickering, you know, in our personal lives because it was very satisfying. All that notwithstanding, Pedro, as I don't know even why, after all these years, I've always called you Pedro. I will sincerely miss you, and I hope that you do wonderful things and have a lot of fun and sleep late for at least a few weeks. We will really miss you. Okay, I'm going to be quiet now because I'm getting choked up, and I swore I wouldn't.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Thank you very much. Would anyone else care to contribute?
I'd like to.
Okay, Commissioner Argo?
Yes. How should I begin? Peter and I actually go a long way back to our days as agency leaders in the DC government. Interesting times to which I will not delve further. But in my comparatively short time as a member of NCPC, I have seen what I saw then. Peter's well-honed eye for good design and his quick discerning ability to parse out laws and reinforce solid aspects of projects, only now more sharp, honed, and strategic. His contributions to the work of the commission cannot be overstated. I know that even with my short time having been here. Onward, upward, Peter, to your next big thing.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Betty?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Hewlett. It's fine. So Commissioner Wright and Commissioner Argo have known you for a long time, Commissioner May. And Commissioner Wright has known you for 35 years. I've known you for five months. And I never got to meet you in person, but I cannot tell you how impressed I have been with your acumen, with your insight, the way you delve into these issues, the skills that you bring to the table, so much more that was articulated and expressed in the resolution that was just read by Ms. Costa. I am in awe. I'm in awe of your career and of all your contributions to the nation. And I just wanted to say thank you from a newbie and how much you're appreciated and valued. And it is May 4, and may the 4th be with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hewlett. Any other comments?
I, yes. I'd like to say, so I'm somewhere in between there. I've served on many teams with Peter, starting back in 2001, when Peter joined the DC Government Zoning Commission as a representative for the architects of the Capitol. And I had just started in DC government in the Office of Planning. And Peter was always very generous and very diplomatic in the way he shared information and was very helpful, at least to me, who did not have a strong design background, in kind of pulling us forward and helping us understand the way to think about things. And I think I have worked with Peter in one form or another, except for the year 2006 to 2007, when you took a break. But you went from being on the zoning commission to being on a DC government employee, and we were on that team together as well. And then, of course, through your appointment at NPS and your involvement here. So I want to thank you. And just point out that, you know, for me especially, it has been a great pleasure, and I really appreciated all the behind-the-scenes support that you provided me and all the insight and your generosity with your knowledge. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Steingasser. Commissioner Green?
Well, as a newbie, I just want to thank Peter for being welcoming and for really providing a terrific model of passionate advocacy for good urban design. And maybe not good. Good's not the right word. I think great design, you know, good is not enough. And I think that was one of the things that I really admired about Peter, was that just okay is not acceptable. Good is not enough. Great is to what we should be aspiring. And I just want to thank you for that as a model. And I wish you well, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Anyone else? I see Commissioner Cash?
I won't repeat a lot of this, but I want to thank you for your continued service to the district on the zoning commission even now. We'll be missing you on that. And I just want to personally say that I've learned a lot from you, having absolutely no background in design or any of this stuff in my own life. I've learned a lot from you. You've always been generous with your time in answering a question about a land transfer or something like that. So we'll definitely miss you. Sure, we'll see you around. I know the chairman met with you recently, and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cash. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Commissioner McMahon?
Thank you. And I can't repeat what Elsa said, sort of passionately. And I think that probably describes Peter's approach to the job, his passion, took it seriously. He's taught me a lot. He's helped me work through some issues as I represented the department on a commission. I think we've got some good solutions because of his advice and his guidance. He will be missed by all of us, not least by me. So Peter, best of luck to you, and I hope to see you around the confines somewhere after this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Anyone else? Anyone else on the commission wish to contribute? Well, hearing no other voices, I would like to jump in. I am the third newbie, the most newbie, Peter. But I do want you to know that you make an impression immediately for your passion about this legacy that we're entrusted with, you know, the space and the places in the federal control. And you do have a very sharp eye for good design, or as Commissioner Green said, great design, which is our charge, you know. But I thoroughly appreciate your comments, your guidance, your eagerness to jump in and help steer this ship. You've just done a tremendous job in the few meetings I've attended with you. So I want to thank you, and maybe most importantly, you've been kind for me as a new person. And I think I can say that for the others. You're a kind person, and you're very passionate. And I hope that we can continue with the same legacy. So thank you very much, Commissioner May, for all your contributions. And I know yesterday I had the pleasure of meeting with Commissioner Wright, and she outlined the timeline of both your professional work together and your friendship. And I know this is difficult for her too, and she shares much of the same passions you have shared with the commission. So just wanted to tip my hat to you and to the example you've given us. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. If I think we're finished with this for now, I hope we can all toast you at some retreat or see you sometime in the future where we could at least say these things in person as well. Agenda item number five?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I was, I didn't, wasn't sure whether I was going to get a chance to thank everybody more specifically, but I was hoping to do that. So.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
First of all, I want to thank you, Madam Chair, and my fellow commissioners for the fine work that you've done with me and made my work easier. I want to thank the staff, Marcel, and Beth, Julia, Mike, everybody on the staff for all of the work that you've done over the years to support us as a commission, to support me in the report writing and answering my questions, which, you know, even before we get to the meeting, I can be a real picky person. So I appreciate all that they do.
Oh. Lost the sound. I think we lost you, Commissioner May.
No, you just need to unmute.
Yeah, it happened there. I didn't touch anything. But anyway. So, but everything that you've done, just not to just to support me, us as commissioners, but to support us as applicants too. Because in addition to being commissioner, you know, we bring projects to the commission, and it's important to have that support and understanding from the staff, as well as their, you know, their critical eye on what we are doing. So I'm really grateful for all of that. I have to say, this has been some of the most rewarding and important work of my career. And I am just really grateful for having had the opportunity to serve. I would make note, there are some coming challenges for the commission that are really big, and I'm going to miss not being here for them. So Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative, the changing federal workplace and how that will impact the work of this commission, I think is going to be a very big thing. Big projects like the Armed Forces Retirement Home and how that will develop and how the needs of the residents and the surrounding neighbors are all addressed. Many new memorials. I mean, there are 15 new memorials in process right now, and that's a lot. And I'll be coming to this commission. Maybe not everyone will make it all the way through the commission. But it's a lot going on. And there are major park service projects coming as well. And I'm sorry, I won't be here to advocate for them, but I will be replaced. And I'm sure my successor will do an excellent job representing the park service on those. I will say that, you know, over the years, there have been many battles to fight. And it's, you know, we're in this business where the battles are often fought and sometimes won. And the wars never seem to be won. There's always another battle around the corner. Sometimes, most of the time, I'm fighting alongside the commission, occasionally fighting against the commission. But that happens, and, you know, we do it all in, I think, with the right kind of perspective. We're all aiming ultimately for the same purpose, and it's really just a matter of how we get there. I wanted to offer some words of encouragement to my fellow commissioners. I really want you to be thinking big, right? It's, we have to keep the broader mission of the commission in mind all the time. And we have to think critically, or you have to think critically now. Because it's, you know, no matter what you're presented with, there are always questions to be asked, and there are things to be examined and things to dive deeper on. And, you know, we shouldn't be shy about doing that at any point. I know everybody likes, you know, an easy, uncontroversial meeting. That can be a relief. But it's the controversial ones and the contentious ones, I think, where the most important work can happen. I think we have to remember that the mission is the public realm. Remember, this used to be the National Capital Park and Planning Commission, and the emphasis on the public and their appreciation of what we do and how our environment is experienced in this area. I mean, that is just the critical thing. So don't be timid. Question the applicants. Question the staff. Question each other. Don't just do checkbox planning. That's a temptation all the time. Washington is a great city, and it's a great city in part because of the work of this commission through the years. And I expect it to continue to be that. I'm sorry, I won't be with you, but I'll keep an eye on you. So maybe you'll hear from me. Anyway, thank you very, very much, and thank you for indulging me for a few moments here.
I'm going to give you a round of applause.
Thanks.
Thank you so much, and don't. Thank you so much, and and don't don't forget, we have your phone number, so.
Yeah.
We can, we can stay in touch. But thank you very much, very much. So agenda item number five is reported, the executive director, Mr. Acosta.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon. I'd also like to add a few words on behalf of the NCPC staff. I would like to thank Commissioner May for his service to the commission. We met a very long time ago, but he started, I actually had a full head of hair at that time. But it's been a great experience working with you. You've always generously shared your time and expertise with our staff. And while you've contributed much to the commission around our monthly project review, I would like to actually commend you on your strong support for our long-term planning efforts, especially the Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative. I think we don't focus a lot on our long-term planning at the commission on a month-to-month basis. But you've always been there for us, and you've always been a great advocate for terms of the city and thinking about its design, its structure, its public ground and what it could be as a place. So we will miss you. We wish you all the best in your retirement, and it's been a privilege to work with you. Thank you. I also note that NCPC will host two virtual public meetings on the draft Small Scale Elements Streetscape Guidelines on Tuesday, May ninth at twelve thirty PM and Wednesday, May seventeenth at six PM. Further information can be found on our website. Finally, we welcome Ben Turpin as urban planner in our physical planning division. Ben joins us from Boston, where he was a planner for the US Department of Transportation's Volpe Center. He previously worked as a landscape architect in Boston and Richmond. He received his bachelor's in landscape architecture from Virginia Tech and a master's in city planning from MIT. So welcome, Ben. And if you would just say a few words, so people could find you on the screen.
Sure, I'm really excited to be joining y'all here. It's been a great eight or nine days so far and a lot of exciting projects. So looking forward to meeting everybody and continuing my work here at NCPC. Thanks so much.
Welcome aboard. And with that, Madam Chair, that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Acosta. I too want to extend on behalf of the commission, a welcome to Ben, welcome to the team, and we look forward to working with you. Do any of the commissioners have any questions or comments for the executive director? Okay, hearing none, then we're going to move on to agenda item number six, and that is Ms. Anne Schuyler. Would you like to make a report at this time?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, I would. But first, if I may, I would like to congratulate Commissioner Hewlett and Commissioner Dixon on their new roles. I'm sure they will serve the commission well. And I'd also like to wish a happy retirement to Commissioner May. You've done stellar work for this commission and your legacy will live on and as well, I'm sure, will the quality of the comments and reviews that we provide on applications. So thank you very much. Madam Chair, today I'd like to report on House of Representatives Bill twenty-seven seventeen. This is entitled, The Herschel Woody Williams National Medal of Honor Monument Location Act. It was introduced on April nineteenth of this of this year and referred to the House Committee on Natural Resources. The bill is dedicated to Herschel Woody Williams, the last World War, World War II recipient of the Medal of Honor, who died in in two thousand and twenty-two, amends public law one seventeen dash eighty. This public law authorized the National Medal of Honor Museum Foundation to establish a commemorative work on Federal Land in the District of Columbia or its admirands, consistent with the requirements of the Commemorative Works Act, to honor the extraordinary acts of valor, selfless service, and sacrifice displayed by Medal of Honor recipients. The amendment proposed by H R twenty-seven seventeen authorizes a commemorative work to Medal of Honor recipients to be located within the reserve, attached to or not more than one thousand feet from the Lincoln Memorial. This requirement stems from the fact that President Abraham Lincoln was the founder and awarded the first Medal of Honors in our country's history. That concludes my report. The bill will be coming to the, this this memorial will be coming to the commission. But it remains to be seen whether this bill and its location requirement will pass. Thank you very much, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Schuyler. Are there any questions? Hearing none, thank you very much for that report, Ms. Schuyler. We're moving on to agenda item number seven, and that is a consent calendar. And there's one item on this month's consent calendar, and that is to approve comments on the District of Columbia Capital Improvement Program. Are there any questions or discussions on the consent calendar?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Cash.
I just wanted to put on the record, first, thanks for for the E D R. I think that, as always, the the comments on the mayor's proposed capital plan is always useful to the council in, as we deliberate on our final plan in the coming weeks. I just want to put on the record that that a few of the projects that are highlighted in the plan, you might have seen in the news, there there's some discussion of moving some of those priorities around the budget. So I just wanted to acknowledge that on on the record before you approve it, but also thank the commission for the invaluable insight that you give to us every year on me. So and with that, I would move the E D R.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Commissioner Cash. So there's been a motion to move to approve the consent calendar. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Ms. Costa, can you confirm the motion in the second and take the roll call vote, please?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I did.
I'm sorry. Okay, there is a question.
I had a comment on it. One of the projects that's listed refers to modifications at Farragut Square. And much of the work that's described there are things that will be problematic for the park service. But I also am not totally sure that that's exactly exactly the intent. When it comes to that project, I think that there may have been some some issues with how the the text was written when it got inserted into the into the the budget. But, you know, some of the, some aspects of what's described there are things that are 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 really problematic for that park. But we expect to work with the district to see what we can work on together as should this budget actually be approved.
Duly noted, Commissioner May. Any comments or questions? Further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Costa, can you please take the vote?
Yes, and I'll just note that Commissioner Cash made the motion. Commissioner Hewlett seconded. And with that, Commissioner Steingasser?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo? Commissioner Argo?
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hewlett?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
And Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
The motion has carried, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The motion has carried, and we're moving on to agenda item eight-eight. That is to approve comments on the National Arboretum's concept plans for the Bladensburg Gate and improvements to the Azalea Road.
Good afternoon, Chair Goodman and members of the commission. The United States Department of Agriculture has submitted preliminary plans to construct a new main visitor gate for the National Arboretum along Bladensburg Road. The project would also construct a new access road and repave part of an interior arboretum roadway known as Azalea Road. As part of the repaving project, a portion of Azalea Road would be widened by four feet to accommodate future two-way traffic between the new Bladensburg Gate and the arboretum's developed interior core area. And before I continue with my presentation, I would like to point out that we recently amended the E D R to note the project's inclusion of security bollards. And we also added a request to review the arboretum's security analysis used to justify the need for bollards as part of the next project submission. The applicant submitted the project for preliminary review. However, staff is recommending a series of concept level comments based on the submission content, its level of detail, and the need to complete a comprehensive transportation analysis for the new Bladensburg Gate and other future projects at the arboretum so that we can better understand the implications of their planned future operational development and land use changes. And this information should be part of the the next Bladensburg Gate project submission. As such, here are our comment categories that relate to the need for the transportation study, as well as the proposed design of the new gate, site design, and finally, we request some specific information as part of the next project submission from the applicant. And I will go through each of these topic areas as part of my presentation. So to help orient you, here's a satellite photo of the four hundred and forty-six acre arboretum property, which is located two point three miles to the northeast of the US Capitol Building. That irregularly shaped property is situated between New York Avenue to the north with adjacent sections of Bladenburg, Bladensburg Road and R Street to the west and M Street to the south. The current main public gate to the arboretum is located at the end of R Street, which is a residential street. And here you can see a variety of adjacent nearby land uses with Anacostia Park to the south and east, residential neighborhoods to the south, southwest and west, and various commercial areas shown here in yellow, located to the northwest and the north. The arboretum mission is to enhance the economic, environmental, and aesthetic value of ornamental and landscape plants through long-term multidisciplinary research, conservation of genetic resources, and interpretive gardens and exhibits. Early American leaders envisioned a national garden where science could be applied to the country's agricultural resources to advance national economic prosperity. In response, Congress passed the National Arboretum Act on March fourth, nineteen twenty-seven, to establish the arboretum for the purposes of research and education concerning tree and plant life. Currently, more than six hundred thousand people visit the arboretum annually to appreciate its balance of cultivated gardens and natural landscapes, to enjoy the grounds as a recreational amenity, and to learn about horticulture. As part of the USDA's Agricultural Research Service, the arboretum employs scientists to maintain a large and invaluable inventory of plants to support research for the nation and around the world. The latest comprehensive arboretum master plan is from two thousand. And more recently, the USDA took an initial step towards updating this plan with a concept level master plan submission to NCPC in two thousand and twenty-one for review and comment. The Arboretum's Concept Core Framework Plan was based on a number of future planning goals, including reinforcing the arboretum's campus core through future development and improving interior circulation and perimeter accessibility, and augmenting the the arboretum's ecological character, scientific mission, and historic assets. And the commission commented favorably on the core plan's overall approach, its vision, goals, and objectives, and the arboretum's proposal to construct a new main visitor gate along Bladensburg Road, which is the subject of our review here today. As part of our master plan review action, the commission requested additional traffic and parking information as part of a future draft arboretum master plan submission. And this would help us better understand the impacts of the new Bladensburg Road Gate and other proposed changes as reflected in the Concept Core Framework Master Plan. More recently, in January two thousand and twenty-two, our commission approved an arboretum proposal to replace its decorative perimeter fencing. And as part of that project submission, the arboretum described a number of proposed changes to his to its existing system of gates. Here is a graphic from our previous review, which shows a total of eight existing gates today, some of which are non-operational. Several gates currently allow pedestrian and service vehicle access only. And there are two gates that allow public vehicular access into the arboretum. One visitor gate is located along New York Avenue, and the other gate is situated at the end of R Street north northeast. And that project submission did reflect the arboretum's current proposal to relocate its main visitor gate from R Street to Bladensburg Road, along with the closing of New York Avenue, the New York Avenue Gate to visitors. So in the future, all visiting motorized traffic would use the new Bladensburg Gate to access the arboretum. As part of our commission action, we noted the arboretum would not implement any operational changes to its gate until its next master plan update was approved by NCPC. And we reminded the arboretum to coordinate all plant circulation and accessibility-related changes with D dot, the District Office of Planning, and other stakeholders. And we also noted the arboretum will need to work with NCPC and D dot to assess its future transportation and parking impacts. And so we again reiterate these points in today's executive director's recommendation, which is before us here today for adoption. First, requiring the arboretum to complete a comprehensive analysis that examines specific issues that include assessing the Bladensburg Gate's use as the only future public vehicular gate, changing part of the arboretum's internal roadway network to two-way traffic, and assessing the need for a new traffic signal at the future Bladensburg Gate intersection. And we also note the applicant will work with D dot to undertake the study. And we include a requirement for the arboretum to submit its transportation analysis to NCPC as part of the next project submission, and along with a modified two thousand and twenty core framework plan so that we can understand the transportation implications from all of the arboretum's future projects. So with that planning context, I will now walk you through the project submission itself. The purpose of the new gate is to improve public accessibility, to increase the arboretum's visibility, and to reduce visitor traffic along R Street northeast. Here is the project location in the western part of the arboretum with the new Bladensburg Gate, a new twelve hundred foot long access road, and the repaving of a thirty-seven hundred foot long section of Azalea Road, twenty-five hundred feet of which are approximately seventy percent would be widened by four feet to accommodate future two-way traffic between the new gate and the arboretum's developed core area. And this is reflected again in the two thousand and twenty Concept Framework Plan. Here is a closer in view of the existing new gate location, currently improved with a median break, a seventy-two foot wide curb cut and driveway apron, and these were previously installed by D dot in two thousand and five to prepare the site for the arboretum's future visitor entrance here. Here is a site plan that shows the new gate with a retaining wall on its north side and a perimeter fence connection to its south side. The gate itself would include a pair of double swing arms, and the two interior arms would connect to a short section of black decorative fencing, which would be installed directly into the pavement. Here's a close-up of the preliminary project rendering that shows the new gate's different components. And the arboretum intends the current gate design to be an interim solution until the new entrance becomes operational, and then the applicant will seek additional funding to further refine the gate design in the future. The gate's north retaining wall would be constructed in reinforced concrete with a real stone facade to help give the structure a more rustic and natural look. And the stone would reflect other existing arboretum gates as shown in these photos on the left-hand side of the slide. However, in light of the gate's function as the arboretum's new main public entrance, and with future funding uncertainty, the arboretum should continue to refine its gate design now with possible changes that may include a new wall on the gate's south side to give the entrance a more symmetrical look, installing new decorative pavement, adding a raised landscape median, and installing appropriate entry signage. And we include these suggestions in our final executive director's recommendation today that's before you. In addition, these are the two late comments that we added to the revised E D R. We note the current plan shows security bollards on one side of the driveway in front of the retaining wall. And we added a request for the arboretum to submit a security threat assessment that justifies the needs to install bollards there. And these comments are again included in the executive director's recommendation. To the arboretum, the natural topography of the project site is sloping, rising by approximately thirty feet between Bladensburg Road To the Arboretum, the natural topography of the project site is sloping, rising by approximately thirty feet between Bladensburg Road. And Azalea Road to the east. The site would require regrading to accommodate the new access road. The new twelve hundred foot long road would average just over two percent grade, which complies with ADA standards. With a twenty-four foot width to accommodate future two-way traffic and a six-foot wide sidewalk along its west side. The new sidewalk would terminate at a newly created intersection between the access road and Azalea Road. So the intention would be for visiting pedestrians to travel up the hill using the sidewalk until reaching Azalea Road. And then pedestrians would share Azalea Road with vehicles and bicyclists, which is how the Arboretum's interior roadways currently function today. Staff supports the Arboretum's intent to preserve the natural sloping topography here by minimizing the project's use of retaining walls. And we included this as a comment in the final executive director's recommendation. As previously mentioned, the Arboretum would repave Azalea Road between Boxwood Loop in the north and Eagles Nest Road to the east. And these photos help illustrate the need for the proposed repaving. Currently, the section of Azalea Road operates in a one-way counterclockwise direction as shown here on the slide. The project would repave and maintain the road's existing twenty-foot width for continued one-way operation between Boxwood Loop and the new access road. And then a twenty-five hundred foot long section would be repaved and widened by four feet, resulting in a total new roadway width of twenty-four feet. And the widened uh roadway would allow future two-way traffic between the new Bladensburg um road gate. And the Arboretum's developed uh core area, which again is reflected in the twenty twenty Concept Framework Plan. And we note this uh as part of the executive director's recommendation. However, as previously mentioned, without an analysis of this and other changes. Staff is unable to recommend support for the proposed partial two-way conversion at this time. And this is why we have included a number of comments to spell out our need for a future traffic analysis. Uh as I previously summer summarized in the beginning of my presentation. And one last aspect of the project I would like to note here is that the Arboretum would also repave an existing nine-space visitor lot. That is located directly adjacent to Azalea Road, which is shown here in this photo. And as the lot is located relatively close to the few future access road and its uh sidewalk. And an existing trail connection uh which is seen here in this photo. We did include a recommendation to extend the sidewalk along the widened section of Azalea Road. Uh to meet the existing uh trail in the final executive director's recommendation. And finally, I just wanted to mention that although the Arboretum had originally planned to remove an existing historic overlook area as part of this project. Based on the project's ongoing section one oh six consultation process. The applicant has elected to preserve the overlook and we note our support for their decision to preserve this feature. Uh in our final executive director's recommendation. And before I conclude, there are several items that staff would like the applicant to include in its next project submission to the commission. Including lighting plans, a landscape plan, more detailed retaining wall and gate plans. The security threat analysis and updated photo simulations. And we also inserted recommendations to comply with international Dark Sky Association standards. And to incorporate milkweed and other pollinator plants into the project's uh future landscaping. So that concludes my presentation and as I've already gone through each of my comments during the presentation. I will not re-review those uh again at this time. However, I would like to introduce Dr. Richard Olson, who is the Director of the National Arboretum. And he would like to make a statement on behalf of the project. And then once he is finished, he and one of his consultants, Mr. Stephen Kraus. Uh will be both be available to respond to any uh questions that the commission may have. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Michael, and thank you, Commission, for uh this uh review of the preliminary concept plan for the Bladensburg Road Gate. Uh and Azalea Road Stabilization Project. Uh not much to add there, Michael, that's exceptionally con- uh comprehensive, so um I just want to reiterate how important. This project is for us, uh as Michael mentioned, um it's been part of not only the two thousand master plan, but the two thousand seven. Updated master plan, the work was done in two thousand five to put in the intersection. And this issue of a main entrance for vehicles uh has been outstanding at the National Arboretum since the nineteen seventies. So uh we, you know, the prior master plans have all agreed and in collaboration with D Dot that this is the location of the entrance. Um that work was done, so the initial intent of this was that we would be connecting to the already approved. Uh existing intersection and curb cut. It's important to note that uh we have collaborated with D Dot hosting their Bladensburg Road Safety Studies. Uh contributing comments have been hosting their meeting here at the National Arboretum uh to represent the entrance. Uh and uh understand what improvements are being done in Bladensburg, just like we did in nineteen ninety-nine. That led to this entrance and coordinating with with D Dot. The um. As Michael mentioned, that this is um the two thousand twenty Concept Plan, uh the Core Framework. We revisited the approved design from NCPC, uh that design was. Uh unfortunately prohibitively expensive and the realities of funding and funding streams uh within the Arboretum and USDA. Uh makes us uh approach these projects. My apologies. Uh with a sense of what's financially possible, uh so that limits their scopes. And the doable and breakup projects that we can break up into um things that might actually get the attention. Of uh the administration and Congress, all of our funds for this type of project must come through USDA and then ultimately Congress. It's also important to note that in the the concept, as Michael pointed out, that our street. Uh would be renovated uh in the future to include reopen as a pedestrian and bicycle gate. Uh there's a pedestrian door there that's been closed for for many decades, uh so that would be available. Uh to accommodate the incoming uh proposed bike traffic as well as the M Street Gate, which uh prior to the two twenty um twenty twenty Concept. Twenty twenty-one Core Framework Plan, uh recall that the M Street Gate was removed. Um so we have put that back to include uh increase the access for bicyclists and pedestrians. Who would be walking into the neighborhood versus necessarily walking down Bladensburg Road, so. With that, I will uh just introduce Stephen, uh he is with STV who we have retained uh as the designers for this. As you may recall that uh they were part of the USNA Perimeter Fence Projects, so these have been working uh hand in hand. And I'll let Steve um uh take the floor, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Olson, uh good afternoon, everybody. Um just a few comments here, I think, uh as we've uh as Mike presented, a very comprehensive review of the project here. Just a couple other things to to add as Dr. Olson just mentioned. Um this project will complete uh the fencing security perimeter uh in this particular area along Bladensburg Road. So the uh perimeter fence replacement project is ongoing in construction right now. So this will seamlessly tie into it, so on the north side from that retaining wall. That serves uh primarily uh as an engineering function uh to retain some of that grade as we reslope. Um going up towards um uh Azalea Road to the east. Uh but then also, we want to make that aesthetically pleasing and tie into other uh walls in the area. Uh so given the the real stone treatment, um you know, will be accomplished as Mike um commented on. On the south side uh due to, as Dr. Olson stated, the realities of funding. The intent is really to get the infrastructure uh in place. So uh the new vehicular double swing gates will be that black um ornamental fence in nature. Uh the same style fence which is being installed elsewhere right now as part of the perimeter fence replacement project. Um and on the south side, there's uh no planned retaining wall because from an engineering standpoint. Uh there's no need for that wall to retain the grade in that particular area. Um so that's uh some of the rationale behind um, you know, where we have certain treatments and other ones are a little bit more. Uh sticking to what's, you know, needed from a functional standpoint. I will note um just for for context, the ballards which are located uh in front of that retaining wall. Um that is uh intended to be there more so as more of a self-protected uh self-protection type feature. Uh for uh cars, which oftentimes due to the bend in Bladensburg Road right in that particular area for northbound traffic. Uh there've been many times where vehicles will end up over the curb and up into that area, damaging the existing fence. Which right now is just a chain link type fence. But that is more so to preserve um the, you know, the infrastructure and the new wall and other facilities that will be there. Um and and not intended to be um a security um to secure the perimeter or the Arboretum itself. Um right there. Um but with without um, you know, further ado, I'll open it up to any questions, you know, from the commission at this time, happy to, you know, respond to anything you may be wondering about.
Well, first of all, I'd like to um. Begin by thanking Mr. Wild, Mr. Olson and Mr. Kraus for this um review of the concept plan for the Bladensburg Gate. And the Zalea Road. Um are, before we ask for a motion to approve these comments, are there any questions for the presenters from commissioners? Yes, Commissioner May.
Yeah, just one small question, um I saw in the plans that along that, the access road there, um. There's a a a single parking space, it seemed, and I'm just wondering what the purpose of that is.
Yeah, great, great question, Commissioner May, uh the intent of that. Uh kind of parking space right there on the uh the west side of the new entrance road. That's intended for larger events when the Arboretum is open and they have a lot of vehicular traffic coming into that gate. That's intended for a Arboretum security vehicle to be able to be positioned there to help kind of queue and enter the traffic. Uh into the gate, you know, get it off Bladensburg Road, so it's just going to be used on more of a temporary basis for a Arboretum security vehicle.
Um and so um, you know, with another times of the year when the Arboretum is very busy. Um does that, I mean, does it happen right now that there are long lines of people uh queuing to get in the gate? The existing entrance?
I'll take this one, Stephen, thank you, Commissioner May. Um not particularly, uh the traffic is managed uh through R Street, is a lot of traffic, it it can queue at at times. Um but uh. The um, the the real issue is really for special events when you have to restrict access. So if it's a special event in the evening, um you you. You would have a guard there making sure that only people who have access.
Okay, so especially that's when you, you know, you've read it out something and and you've got people coming in after hours. All right, uh thank you very much.
Any other questions? These are questions, we'll have comments after the motion, but question from Commissioner Cash.
Uh yeah, so I may have missed this when we were going through the presentation, but of all the. Of all the gates that are currently open, which looks like the unnamed, you know, Conifer Road, New York Avenue, Hickey Run, R Street. Which one of those are, are all of those going to be, continue to be open as ways to get in by foot or by bike? Guess I'm asking like what, what are the the proposed pedestrian and bike entrance is going to be going forward with this new gate?
Right, good question, um the twenty twenty Concept Plan for the core uh New York Avenue, uh New York Avenue Gate. Uh is a service uh staff entrance only. There is an old pedestrian gate at what we call the Washington Times uh building, which is the northeast corner, uh that is remaining as of now. Um we propose reopening the M Street Gate, and again, that gate doesn't exist anymore, so it's not a reopening, it's a reinstalling. Then you'd have the new Bladensburg Gate that we're talking, and then R Street would be the service um staff entrance, pedestrian, bike. So the other thing that we didn't mention was, as early as uh. Uh the late nineties, the staff was already commenting on the significant cut-through traffic uh that moves through the Arboretum, those you're familiar with Bladensburg Road and New York Avenue. So currently, uh out of the safety of our staff and for the sake of the neighborhood. Our our street gate has closed the vehicles at two, two P M. in the afternoon. Uh I was leaving last night for an event and there is a stream of cars coming down R Street, trying to use their apps to cut through the Arboretum. And then they have to make a U-turn through the neighborhood and rejoin uh Bladensburg Road. So uh the intent there is that uh there would be no access to New York Avenue for vehicles. Because that has in the past encouraged uh dangerous cut-through traffic.
Madam, I have a question as well.
Yes, Commissioner Hewlett.
Thank you, um so I realize that the whole Arboretum is about four hundred and forty-six acres. Um but I have traveled down um the Anacostia River. Um commencing at Bladensburg Waterfront Park and traveled down and there was an access to the Arboretum, a waterfront access. And I wanted to know a couple of things, one, even though this is four hundred and forty-six acres, do you envision any impact from the gate? Or the perimeter fencing on the Anacostia River? Um and I also know that there's a uh, the commission reviewed an update to the Arboretum Master Plan in two thousand and seven, and I wasn't on the commission then. Um but then you plan to reopen the waterfront access, is it?
Um yes, uh if I make sure, there's a lot to unpack there, Commissioner Hewlett.
Okay.
With re- with regard to um waterfront access, let's start there, uh the river doesn't belong to me, uh thankfully. Uh so that was a joint project with NPS and some uh nonprofits. Uh I apologize, I don't remember the exact Anacostia River Keepers or or which one. Who had paid for and raised funds to have a floating dock on National Park Service property. Our property ends a hundred or so feet before you get to the river, uh so that's National Park Service property. Um second issue uh that is, and you are probably well aware on this, is the Arboret- the proposed Arboretum, the Arboretum Bridge. Across the national uh across the Anacostia, and I I don't think I need to speak to that, you are probably well informed of that. And then uh how does any of this change? Uh it's really the bridge that would change and we have accommodated um in prior master plans, the the fact that this bridge may show up. Um and I think that's maybe a longer discussion, but uh we are working with uh D Dot and others on. What that bridge means and how do you get to it? Um there's a lot to unpack there.
And one other thing I may add, Commissioner Hewlett, is on the perimeter fence replacement project. That does not replace the fence on the east side closest to the river. So there's no changes to what's existing, really, the perimeter fence replacement project is on the northwest. And on the south side and kind of stops at M Street, so that's kind of the perimeter of it, so we're not actually replacing the entirety. Uh of the perimeter, there's chain link over there on the east side, but there's no changes as part of that ongoing project.
I was concerned about the Anacostia River, I participated in cleanup there, um extensive cleanup there. And um we've worked with the Anacostia Watershed Society, I just want to make sure that what we have planned. Um is, doesn't have any negative impact, we're trying to restore that river, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hewlett, Commissioner Steinkasser.
Yes, thank you. I I was focusing in on the ballards that are along the gate that are protecting the retaining wall. Are those just the standard concrete? Stubbs of ballards?
Be more decorative with a a black finish on them, um so there be.
Uh I mean, are, I, well, I guess I wonder if they're really truly necessary. And if they are truly root necessary, if if there isn't a way to use the wall except itself in a in a more. Functional way that the ballards aren't just those con- concrete. And and I, now that I know they're black, that raises the question, are they going to even be that visible to the drivers to defer? Them being banged into.
Right, good, good point, so we're definitely open to, you know, some other options to kind of keep the functional aspect of that, but, you know, trying to. Uh you know, integrate that as much as possible into the aesthetics of kind of the entrance area and the wall. Um but to the other point, you know, if uh that they're obviously located, you know, off the road, even beyond the sidewalk at that point. Um so they're not designed to be, you know, a visual deterrent per se. Uh because a a vehicle would be off the road, you know, uh by that point, when they'd be, you know, heading that way anyway. Um but uh definitely that's something we can look at a little bit more to try to integrate that into um kind of the landscape and the aesthetic.
I I would, I would appreciate that and because it does raise the question, if they're that far off the road, are they necessary at all?
Well, if I may jump in here, Commissioner, the issue is um idiots and drunk drivers. And so this is about protecting our infrastructure. And so this is about protecting our infrastructure. Uh, most of them we have found don't have insurance. The government doesn't carry insurance. So we're on the hook every time uh, a driver leaves the roadway. Um, we have seen it there with that intersection. Uh, so anything there needs to have some planning to to accommodate that because it will become rather expensive to keep fixing that. That decorative stone wall if. Twice a year we have vehicles or or even more leave. The um. The the roadway. Now, I do believe that with the Bladensburg Safety Study. Where they add bike lanes and some other uh, traffic calming devices on Bladensburg Road. I'm hoping that that will help uh, along with. Uh, actually putting in the gate and having infrastructure. Um, there as proposed in the original work with D dot that put in the road cut and intersection would help, but um. That's the primary issue is 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 people leaving the bars at three A M. Uh, hitting our hitting our gate, hitting our fence.
Okay, I want to.
Yeah, just re- re-stress my. Request that that be looked at again in in a way that's more integrated into the fence of design of the fence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Steinkasser, uh, Commissioner Wright.
Yeah, I I have a question about, um, so. I'm assuming, but I shouldn't. Did you talk to um? In making decisions about the R Street Gate, were you, have you been um, consulting with the community?
Uh, yeah, we're well, very much aware of. Not lately because it hasn't changed, but they are um. Jackie Manning was the former A N C Commissioner for the Arboretum Neighborhood. Uh, we stay abreast of developments. Uh, but traffic is the single biggest issue for the neighborhood, particularly in the spring. That road was not designed. Last weekend. Uh, one of our peak weekends, we had seven thousand cars uh, go through. Um, the two gates at the arboretum. We had two counters or uh, electronic eyes. So we had twenty one thousand people here. Um, and two, two things happened currently. Um, they, all that traffic, it has to go through our street and the neighborhood. Uh, D dot has not listened, uh, has not taken. Um, has not proposed any solutions to the neighborhood that is acceptable to the neighborhood like. Permit parking or other things, because the other thing that happens is when our gates close at two. And or we're just busy and people know they will park throughout the neighborhood. Uh, uh, in lieu of going around that gate, so.
So so I I get all that, but I mean, uh, and. I kind of, I I mean, I, but. Have you talked to them about, obviously, I mean, I think it's probably it's self evident that that they they probably are very welcoming. Of the idea of closing that gate to vehicular traffic. However. The the. Has the the secondary use for bikes and pedestrians been discussed with them too? And and I guess I'm, what I'm getting at is it was there, was there? Do they have a, do they, has, have they had any say in the decision making? Um, regarding the the, what happens next when Bladensburg Road it becomes the primary entrance and they become secondary? Were, did they have any ideas about what they'd like to see there?
Right, yeah, so were they informed or were they, did they participate? They participated through the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, whatever the date we use. Concept plan for the 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 core framework and part of the the biggest changes there. Um, that we heard from the neighborhoods uh, was the reopening of the M Street Gate for pedestrians uh. And bicyclists. So the redevelopment of the area means there's a lot more folks. Um, and currently, uh, that gate for the Arboretum Neighborhood. Uh, is left almost uh, is. The the idea of reopening that as a pedestrian is so that folks that are literally one block away from the arboretum. Can continue to access the arboretum without having to go. To Bladensburg. So it's it's all been coordinated.
So will the, will the, will? Will the the gate? Visually. Signal to the cars who want to cut through and have been cutting through. Will, is it going to be? At on this, on Bladensburg Road and R Street, is that, is? How are you going to signal to the would be cutter throughers that they can't cut through anymore?
That.
On on the, on Bladensburg.
That would be taken care of on on the apps. What they're using is the the apps that show a connection. To New York Avenue. Um, with a gate that's open. So as Michael referenced, as part of um. Any future work, no operational, uh, the operations of the gate will commit the changes of the operations of the gate. Um, will occur until everything is finalized and approved and everything is installed. And at that point, uh, there'll be. If we ever, if we ever get to that day, um, then we would have obviously a a communication plan and signage plan and other things already in place so that we can. We can make the, we can make the change. So.
Okay, thank you.
One other, one other thing I'll offer kind of to that point, Commissioner Wright, is um, the neighborhoods have been invited as part of the section one oh six process for this project. Uh, to participate. We've had one formal meeting thus far. I don't believe. Um, we've had any of the neighborhood associations participate in there, uh, but I believe we did have some participation uh, as part of the perimeter fence project. Uh, which is, you know, related to it. Uh, so we have been trying to actively, you know, reach out and invite them to counsel. Um, and offer their, you know, thoughts and opinions, um, you know, throughout the processes. We're still in design and have an opportunity. Um, to inform things.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, are there any further questions? On the presentation? If not, I want to thank uh, Mr. Wild, Mr. Olson, Mr. Kraus for presenting the concept plan today and. Now bring it back to the table uh, for the commission discussion. Um, if you could uh, turn on your cameras if you haven't, and I would um, entertain a motion. To approve the concept plans for the National Arboretum, Splainsburg Gate and Azalea Road Improvements Proposal. Ceremony.
As Madam Chair, I move approval. Of the concept plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hewitt. And is there a second?
I'll second, but. Wanted to clarify that we're approving comments on the concept. We're not. Really approving the.
Yes. No, I I thought, I'm sorry if I misspoke. Yes.
Thank you.
Approve the comments, yes, uh huh, thank you. And and Peter, or I'm sorry, for me, seconded that. Okay, fine, thank you. Then uh, that motion has been made and seconded, so now I'm going to start with Commissioner May. And go around Robin and have a a commission discussion about. About the presentation.
Right, so um, first of all, I I I am. I really welcome um. New submissions on the improvements to the arboretum. I I and I really feel the pain of of having to. Do this uh, in pieces rather than, you know, executing. Uh, being able to execute a full master plan, um, because. Challenges uh, that the arboretum faces. So Dr. Olson, I I I have my sympathy and trying to. To make all these things happen. Um, it's really a challenge. The uh, and I I will say also, I agree with the uh, all of the comments that are. In the uh, E D R. Particularly comments uh, about. The design of the gate. Um, because I do think that the gate has to look. Like. It's appropriate for this magnificent facility. It would be a shame to just have, you know, a regular tubular metal. You know, swing gate. Because that's. All that could be afforded. And if there's, you know, if there's some. Dollar limit on what might be. Uh, fundable uh, in this circumstance. Um, I I I would. Encourage that that. The the team look at. Other aspects of the project that might be. Uh, where there there might be room to to cut in order to make. A better gate. Because I, I I mean, I just have the feeling. And this is just a feeling, but. That. If you, if you make something really good. And it and it. And it really just announces. The arboretum, which is, which for so many people is is like buried treasure. They don't really. Uh, understand it and appreciate it. But if you really announce it, and and I know, you know, Bladensburg Road is. Is not Pennsylvania Avenue, but it's a heavily trafficked road. And uh, almost everybody knows that it's there, the road anyway, they, you know, many, many people have gone down there. And 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 I just think it's, it it's, it's a way to announce to the city. Uh, that, uh, you know, this wonderful facility is here. And it's not the place to to um. Um, to go cheap on the gate. Um, it's also not the place. To come up with an inadequate design solution. For that gate where in order to protect. A stone clad concrete wall, you have to put bollards in front of it. And I I understand the challenge. I mean, we have this challenge too. People can be incredibly stupid when they're behind the wheel. Um, especially if they're under the influence of something. Uh, and 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 we have this problem regularly in on on parkland throughout the city where people drive into things. Uh, and. I I have to believe that there's a better solution than than building a uh, stone clad concrete wall and then popping some bollards in front of it. And I, you know, that can. That may have to do with. Uh, you know, other protections that could be built into the uh. Into that entrance that are actually of a piece with it. It could also involve using less expensive materials, um, you know, the the idea that. Um, you have to have a a. A a large retaining wall that's covered with. Um, with. Uh, stone cladding that. You know, will easily break off when struck by a vehicle. I mean, maybe that's just not the right solution. Maybe there needs to be, you know, uh, uh, some sort of concrete finish up to a certain point. Uh, and and then a stone finish above that, that that draws inspiration from the stone that exists. Elsewhere on the campus. Um, I I just, I feel like there are other solutions that can be found. And um, you know, no offense to the design team that's working on it. But um, I, you know, what I've seen in this regard, um, in in terms of the gate is a little bit uninspired. Just from uh, an aesthetic perspective. So I think that, you know, it may be something where. A little bit more investment in some. Higher level design expertise or people who are who are. More attuned to the. To the architecture of the. And landscape architecture of the uh, of the arboretum might do a better job. Uh, integrating this because this this just feels. Like it's, it's just an engineering solution. It's functional, it works. It's uninspired. And I think you need something inspirational here. Otherwise, I mean, I think I love the idea of it and I I really appreciate trying to move some of these things forward. Uh, you know, I travel down Bladensburg. Road frequently. Uh, and uh, so. I, and every time I go by it, I just long for the day when that that gate is going to be there and be open. And uh, I think it's going to be wonderful when it's done. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Um, Commissioner Argo.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
I think, okay, got it. And. I have no, I have no additional comments.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Argo. And next, Commissioner Hewitt.
I have no. I have no additional comments either. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, um. Commissioner Green.
No additional comment. Thank you very much.
Uh, Commissioner Wright.
Well, of course I have comments. Um, I I would like to second Mr. May's opinions. Um, I think the entrance. I think the whole purpose of this is to create, you know, not a ceremonial entrance, but there's a lot of symbolism involved and. And and. And um. And I think the current design is, I was not going to say uninspiring. It's just, it's fall fall short of the mark in terms of of, it could be a a lot more elegant. I don't understand the bollards in front of the wall at all. Um, and I would second his suggestion that you look at. Hardening the wall, um, or. Uh, going dispensing with the stone or 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 stone or cement altogether and look. At something, at the design of something really beautiful that's hardened and in metal. Um, because it it just, it it it. So so if you're going to go with the stone, I would also concur with um, the E D R would suggest. Uh, so a certain amount of symmetry. Right now, it it kind of seems like it can't decide what it wants to be. It's sort of. Back of house, but not really. Um, it's halfway ceremonial, but not really. So I think it has to be. Considered more holistically with what announcements it's trying to make. And particularly in concert with the R Street, what what the the solution for R Street, because these the two things. I I mean, I I get what you said, Mr. Olson, about the apps, but not everybody. I know it's hard to believe. Not everybody's using using a G P S app. Not, some people are just gutting it out in 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 rush hour and they see that that, you know, that. I I've been in that that line trying to make a right on to New York Avenue. Um, so I I think that I would recommend that you reconsider both solutions um, in tandem. And have them work together and not necessarily rely. On an online um, set of directions and and be a little, think more intuitively about what each gate. Um, what what enter, what? What functions? You see each. Each entrance. Implementing. Because I just think it's it's um, it's a shame. And there's also a a a noticeable dearth of landscape. Um, um, in in the design, which seems odd for the arboretum.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Dixon, please.
Oh, yeah, thank you very much. First, I uh. Join in with uh. My commissioners about the 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 quality and the design of the wall. I I think it's a monumental. Opportunity in a way to to commemorate and make. This this wonderful, wonderful space uh, uh, attractive and and entrance attractive. I also have a special feeling because my first home I had. Uh, was in that neighborhood, was in one of the apartment buildings right near the arboretum. And I used to use that place as a place to do, to to run and jog in those days when I was running and jogging. So I have a special historical connection and 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 like to think of it really as another amenity. For that community that they can access with no issues. And should access and feel they can access it. It was almost like our enlarged backyard. Uh, with really spectacular backyard. So I I'm glad that the community was involved. I hope you'll keep them involved, and I do think we ought to try to. Uh, make the specialness of it reflected in the in this in this wall that's been, the gate that's being built. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon.
I also want to mention, it was brought up about the water access. I I hope that that's still happens. I think it's a. Great concept to have folks come in by water by the Anacostia River and be able to step off and go into such a. A related nat- natural space. So I hope they can make that happen successfully.
That's a great suggestion, Commissioner Dixon. Thank you. Commissioner Cash.
Yeah, I have a few comments. Um, so I've been looking off to the right logs. I'm looking at the Google Maps um, view of this particular where this gate is going to go. And indeed, there is a very, very, very large one hundred foot long curb cut. Um, and the thing that strikes me immediately in seeing the existing condition and what's being proposed is there doesn't seem to be a lot of thought that's been put into how we're going to manage pedestrians getting across that hundred foot curb cut. And it does look like from the street view that there is. There's currently a crosswalk that traverses the six lanes or seven lanes of Bladensburg Road. If you're going northbound right before you get to the curb cut, so it looks like there already has been a crosswalk installed. But it looks like the infrastructure is also there that it's going to be a signalized intersection, which I would think it would have to be for anyone making a left turn in. Or even the right. So the thing that strikes me, if this is going to be signalized, which it should be in any event. I think that really cuts down on the concern that we have about these northbound cars crashing into the wall, like. It it should slow down the traffic. On Bladensburg and hopefully kind of reduce that. Possibility. So I just hope that when you're working with D dot and working with the district on on transportation management. Assuming that there is going to be some infrastructure going in here to signalize the intersection, I think that really. Alleviates the concern about the wall being hit. So I hope when you're going back and looking at the bollards and looking at even the need for them. That we're taking into account that future condition that I assume will be there. Um, the only other one plug that I wanted to give, because no one's really talked about the the interior roads. Uh, I appreciate the. Uh I appreciate the E R calls in to question the need for two way traffic. I think that's something that still needs to be looked at. And to the extent that any of these interior roads are being repaved, I hope that the arboretum can look to see if it's feasible for more. Porous materials that we can put down instead of just that black, really hot tar. Roadway that's that's in there now that I know especially in the summer can get hot. So. I hope that you're using all these opportunities as a chance to say, let's not just repave the road. Let's see if. There's a way in the budget that we can make that road actually better, especially for. For a site like this that, because I think that the E D R did mention some stormwater concerns. So that was the first thing that popped by that. Take the opportunities where you can, if you're gonna be tearing up the road because you might not get this for another twenty five years. So. Um those are the comments and observations that I have. So thanks.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Cash. Commissioner Davis.
I no additional comments for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Uh Commissioner Stein Gasser.
Yes, I I I really do want to associate myself with all of the comments that have been made about the design and the missed opportunity. To really announce. The presence of this this gate and in the and the entrance to the arboretum. It is, it is such a great opportunity and. It it just hasn't hasn't been embellished. And I also agree with Commissioner Castro's comments about the interior. And the two way traffic in the widening of the street and that's raised in the E D R as well. And I I I also just want to reinforce this issue of of the bollards and note that in the E D R. These are issues that are actually underlined and. And it seems very polite and it's a very nice thin line, but it's really a a point of of serious emphasis that I I look forward to seeing how it. Gets addressed in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stein Gasser. Um Commissioner McMahon.
Thank you. I I think besides just associating myself with the comments on other commissioners, I have nothing else to add. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Well, I'd like to close and again, thank the presenters. Thank you. Uh Director Olson and um Michael and um and um our project manager Kraus. Steven Kraus for your presentation. I think all of the comments have been good. I think they're, I think, I hope you find them helpful. I do also support uh the executive director's report on this. It's an aw- awesome opportunity and arboretums are near and dear to Americans' hearts, I believe. Uh they're they're very supported in communities across the country. I do agree that some of the design elements, uh taking another look. At the entrance, um at the gate, at the bollards and um and and that whole sense of arrival is going to be important. So look forward to. Seeing it come back with um the design evolution um as as perhaps could reflect some of our comments today, but also I look. Forward to the transportation results because it is a very uh uh the transportation analysis and results because I think it's a. It's going to be key to to have that entrance um. Uh safe, but also the interior roads. I think it'll be um good to take another look at the at the widening of the roads and and at. At the permeability of those surfaces too, as someone else has pointed out. So again, thank you. And good comments came from the commission and we look forward uh to seeing uh the next iteration. So thank you very much. Um and uh so now we have um, let's see, um um a motion. On the floor and it's it is seconded. And if there are no further comments, are there any more comments? Hearing none, um Ms. Costa, could you please confirm the motion, second call the roll?
Yes, the motion was made by Commissioner Hewlett and seconded by Commissioner May. And with that, Commissioner Stein Gasser.
Yes.
Uh Commissioner McMahon.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner Argo.
Yes.
Uh Commissioner Hewlett.
Yes.
Chair Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon Dixon.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Cash.
Yes.
And Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has carried.
Thank you. Yes, the motion carried. So we're moving on to agenda item eight B. Uh and it is to approve comments on concept plans for the Marine Barracks. Uh Bachelor enlisted quarters here in Washington DC. Mr. Webb, please.
Good afternoon. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Thank you. So good afternoon, Chair Goodman and members of the commission. The Department of the Navy has submitted concept plans. For a new one hundred fifteen thousand square foot, six story bachelor enlisted quarters and support facility. Which will include barrack housing for two hundred and fifty enlisted personnel. As well as administrative offices, a non-commissioned officers' club, fitness facilities and the post-primary food hall. The program spaces within this facility will replace outdated and cost ineffective facilities. Currently located in building twenty on I Street Southeast, just north of I six ninety five. Marine Barracks Washington includes the main post, which is historic and located on H Street Southeast. And the Souza Annex, which is not historic and a block to the west and south of six ninety five, I six ninety five. The project site is located within the Souza Annex at ten fifty three, Seventh Street Southeast, Washington DC. Here is an image of the I Street Barracks Building currently housing the functions that will be moved. To the new facility in the Souza Annex we are discussing today. The Souza Annex is eight point twenty two acres bounded by L Street Southeast to the south. Seventh Street Southeast to the east, Virginia Avenue Southeast to the north and K Street Southeast to the west. The annex parking garage structure borders the subject property to the west. The two point five acre project site will be in the middle of the overall property, immediately adjacent to building twenty five. To the south and east, the athletic field and running track to the north and the parking garage to the west. As this is a concept review, the focus of today's presentation and analysis is to receive commission comments and feedback. Prior to preparation of a more detailed. Detailed preliminary submission. In this case, the focus of the review is understanding the appropriateness of the project for the site in context. Understanding any particular unique or complex issues that need to be addressed. And identifying any stakeholders that may need to be further involved. As such, in today's presentation, staff will identify comments for the commission to adopt as guidance for further project development. Now let's look at some photographs of the Souza Annex Campus. Here is a photo of the existing site showing building twenty five. The annex parking garage and the athletic field. I will note that the building to the north and right of the K Street gate you see to the right in this image. Is a senior citizen residence and not part of the Souza complex. And here are additional photos showing the existing annex parking garage and building twenty five. Here are other views of building twenty five. The proposed facility will be adjacent to and connect with the existing residential and support uses located in building twenty five. Building twenty five is not historic as it was constructed in two thousand and six, nor is the project site located in the historic district. In addition, staff notes that the proposed barracks concept design draws upon the architectural vernacular of the adjacent building twenty five. Which includes brick elevations with cast stone lintels and arches. Cross hip roof lines and an asymmetrical tower element. This slide shows an aerial of the Souza Annex with building twenty five labeled. An asphalt basketball court is located in the southwest corner of the site. As well as the outdoor exercise area just north of building twenty five. The project location for the new barracks building was identified in the Marine Barracks Washington Master Plan. Which was approved by the commission in twenty eighteen. Development alternatives for the barracks project are limited, given the constraints of the site due to building twenty five. Site access, maintaining the athletic field and view shed corridor requirements. Staff notes that in two thousand and two, the Navy and the National Park Service signed a covenant that identified the K. And Sixth Street. Street rights away as protected view sheds and designated the recreation space be accessible for public use in perpetuity. Which results in constraints regarding the placement of the proposed facility. Per the concept plans, concrete sidewalks will provide pedestrian circulation around the site. A concrete retaining wall will be used on the north portion of the site. Because the athletic fields are approximately four feet above the proposed facility's finished floor elevations. A twenty foot access drive and turnaround have been added to facilitate vehicular flow. Entering from the K Street security gate. The emergency vehicle access connects to an existing reinforced fire lane, access from the existing emergency gate on L Street. Here are images that were included in the master plan approved by the commission in twenty eighteen. Staff finds that the proposed building location and massing are generally consistent with the initial concepts described in the Marine Barracks. Washington Master Plan. The footprint avoids intruding on the protected view sheds. Here are images of the elevations of the proposed building. The applicant has indicated that they are treating the new building as an addition to building twenty five. And using the existing design language as a basis for the architectural approach for this building. Here is a rendering of the new building viewed from Virginia Avenue. While the design of the barracks has evolved from what was shown in the master plan. The use of historically influenced design elements such as the cross gable. Pedimented roofs at the corners and over the main entrance, as well as the modified Palladian style window in the entrance bay. Can be challenging when applied to a modern building of this size, height and mass. Here is another rendering of the building viewed from Seventh Street and Virginia Avenue. With the existing building twenty five and its asymmetrical tower on the left side of the image. The window patterning with limited glazing leads to a somewhat stark facade. While staff reckon recognizes and supports the program needs for the new barracks. Staff finds that the proposed architecture will benefit from further improvement. Such that the scale and proportion of the design elements are appropriate for a modern building of this size and height. And as such, request that the applicant explore the following. Revising the architectural treatment of the applied pediment at the entrances and the roof line at the corners to make them less prominent. And also exploring increasing the number or size of windows. Particularly for the dorm rooms, thereby improving the solid to void ratio and increasing the access to daylighting for residents. In addition, further information about the landscape approach will be necessary for the next review. The landscape should help improve the resident experience and create a unified setting for this portion of the campus. Shade trees and ornamental plantings integrated with stormwater management best management practices can help enhance the site. Therefore, staff requests that the applicant provide a detailed landscape plan for the next submission. To include shade trees and ornamental plantings that will beautify the site and enhance the resident quality of life. Staff notes that the athletic field size and configuration will be altered from the existing conditions. However, the process for permitting public access will not change. The applicant should ensure users are aware of future changes to the site. As such, staff recommends that the applicant continue to coordinate with athletic field users and community organizations. So that they are aware of the upcoming changes and impacts during construction. Further, staff recommends that the applicant coordinate with the District Department of Energy and Environment regarding the proposed stormwater management. Strategy and any related permitting requirements. This concludes my presentation. I have incorporated the recommendations from the E D R throughout the presentation. So I will not repeat them again. I would like to introduce Lieutenant Alex Stinksmarx. With the Marine Barracks Washington to make some brief remarks. And I will note that Teresa Perella. And members of the design team are here to help answer any questions the commission may have. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Lee. I appreciate your presentation this afternoon and good afternoon, Chair Goodman and the commissioners. Uh on behalf of the Marine Barracks, I'd like to personally thank you for your time this afternoon to review our. Proposed enlisted quarters and support facility. As was alluded to, this future construction effort is meant to directly enhance and improve the lives of our twelve hundred personnel that work here. Along with those two hundred and fifty residents with particular focus on those junior enlisted folks. Um as has been noted, the existing barracks on I Street were built over fifty years ago and changes in the city environment and significant aging. Has resulted in multiple deficiencies. So this new construction effort is an attempt to um. Take care of those deficiencies with the most prominent one being our anti-terrorism force protection measures that our troops are currently exposed to. We understand the relocation of the the Marines during um or from their existing facility that we call the towers will have a significant impact. On the community, especially during the construction phase. But we're interested in doing everything we can to mitigate any negative impacts that this project may bring. While we've been working with other agencies as well, we've been, we've received extremely valuable feedback to improve the design and we look forward to your feedback. In in addition to what's already been mentioned in this presentation. We look forward to your different perspectives and how they can continue, how we can continue to refine this design. And without any further delay, I'd like to introduce our design lead, Ms. Teresa Perola. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lieutenant St. Mars. On behalf of the design team and Marine Barracks, we appreciate the opportunity. To meet with the commissioners today as we continue to evolve the design to further improve what has been developed while designing a facility that will. Ultimately enhance the quality of life for Marines and complement the neighborhood. We have received valuable input as Lieutenant St. Mars has noted from other agencies, specifically the C F A Commission and the N C P C staff. Uh that we are working to incorporate in upcoming submissions such as further evaluation of the windows and the treatment of them. The roof line at the central bay. And development of additional landscaping features. While all trying to do all that, we're also very conscious of the project building site and how it's constrained within. Uh the three view sheds of Sixth Street, K Street and Virginia Avenue. Uh and also honoring many of the utilities that are running uh within that site. But regardless, um we will continue to work with the staff. Um at each uh agency so that we can continue to involve and evolve the design. Uh so that we have a project that that we can be very proud of ultimately. So as or any questions from the commissioners, as Lieutenant St. Mars has mentioned, we have members from our design team, Mr. Buck Monroe, who's the lead architect. Uh Mr. Steve Shad, who is our civil engineer and our other uh project manager for the facility, Ms. Abby Little. Um all available to answer any of the questions that you may have. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perlin. Thank you, Mr. Your um web and Lieutenant Mars. Uh appreciate that presentation. Now, do we have any questions from the commissioners? Uh hearing no questions from the commissioners, I'll ask one more time. Any questions from commissioners? I don't see any hands up. Um uh hearing no questions and we'll bring it back to the commission. And uh is there a motion to approve comments on the concept plans for the Marine Barracks Washington Bachelor enlisted quarters? It's been moved and seconded. Um Ms. Costa, uh I'm sorry, it's been moved and seconded. Thank you. And I'll start with Commissioner McMahon. Uh for comments. Any comments, Commissioner McMahon?
Uh uh I think just a historical mention years ago when. I wore a uniform and I was a civil engineer and I was uh in charge of what was in E F A chess speak. I was uh. Overseeing broadly because we had a great staff there, the original construction of the first barracks there on that site. So. Nice to see us continue development and I appreciate the efforts from the N F A Washington team and support of the Marine Corps. Come forward with a a good proposal to continue to meet Marine Corps requirements and all being sensitive to the needs of the site. That's all I've got.
Thank you very much, Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner May.
Uh thank you. So uh I'm I'm glad to see this project continuing to move forward. I know that the the there are challenges with building twenty. I'm. I'm uh looking forward to, you know, the day when that when that. Building is uh can go away and there's a nice new facility to replace it. Um I have to say, I mean, I I I. I have to say, I mean, I I live very close to this and I see this, the existing building twenty five all the time and it is a bit of a period piece and it's not a period that that's long ago, right? I mean, it's twenty years old and it's it's like the tail end of postmodernism or something like that. It's not. It's probably not the, well, it's certainly not the best building in Washington. And it's it's it was a somewhat awkward application of these historic features onto a building that didn't really lend itself to it. So it's it's okay because it's still modest in scale. But when you take those same architectural treatments and you, you know, blow it up to twice the size, it it really, really doesn't work at all. And I don't I don't want to go into this in great detail because I think you've gotten good feedback from the Commission of Fine Arts. I happened to listen to some of that discussion a couple of weeks ago. And I think they're all being very polite about it. I I think, and and I will say, you know, we've had, you know, just in the last meeting, we had another discussion of of the architecture not being up to snuff for the context where where it was here. But and in that case, I think it was really, really far off. This is not as far off. I mean, the building massing is pretty well defined, but it's the treatment of the building that and and how, I don't want to use the word, it's it's more than decoration, but how it is. How the 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 form of the building and the and the treatment of the facades, the treatment of the windows need to be better aligned with the mass of that building. And there there are lots of other big buildings in that area. And I almost have to question whether doing something that is so closely tied to a twenty year old, you know, late postmodern building is the right strategy at all, that it's it's not just about getting rid of the pediments. It's it's rethinking, you know, the the solid void relationships, the the use of any arches. You know, it can be a really interesting building, but it doesn't have to be a it it doesn't have to be a a true signature building. It could be sort of the background building to the to the rest of that of that area. And I just, I think a a more I mean, I have to say frankly, a more modern approach to the building probably would be helpful in making it work better in that site. I mean, I I just, when you look at the the one rendering, I think it was on page fourteen, where, you know, you're looking at the the view of it from Virginia Avenue across the field. It is so prominent, so big, and so weirdly out of scale. And so, anyway, I I think a significant look at that. I mean, again, the staff report says the right things. And I just want to emphasize those things. I think it's, I think you're, you know, it's not that far to go, but you do have to kind of rethink your basis, in my view. And and of course, I also agree with the the comments about the landscape design too, because it's, even now, it's quite bare. And much more can be done to make that entire campus fit better into that neighborhood. It's it's not an easy neighborhood to fit into because you got the freeway right next to it and it's elevated and all that. But, you know, doing something there to to make it feel more comfortable within the neighborhood is is essential. And I'll just say, I'm I'm glad to know that there aren't going to be changes in how the field is going to be used and available to the community. That was critical from when the National Park Service transferred land to make the the original project possible. I know that early on, there were challenges in making that happen to begin with. I've got a lot of complaints from people about how it was not accessible. And I think if anything, it could become more accessible to the community. And that would be a good thing, but I'm not pushing for any changes to the EDR to to push it in that direction. So anyway, I've talked enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Appreciate your remarks. Commissioner Argo.
I have to say, see, that's what I'm going to miss the most about Peter is that he goes right before me in the lineup and takes care of everything and, you know, in a most insightful you know, penititive, penititive way and, you know, it's, on the one hand, it doesn't leave me much. On the other hand, I so appreciate his his expertise and his insights. So it gave me a chance to say that. And and I have, I I really don't have anything to add. I think the, I think all the comments have been here, have been on this project, have been it it in a in a little more detailed way, really, hopefully useful to the applicants. And and I don't have anything to add beyond that. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Commissioner Vice Chair Hewlett, please.
Yeah, thank you. I would just, I don't have anything to add really, except that I concur with the comments and I particularly concur with the sentiment of Commissioner Argo about Commissioner May. So that's where I leave. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Vice Chair Hewlett and Commissioner Green.
Thank you very much. Now, I, I mean, I really appreciate the the efforts of the applicant to, you know, design a building that fits its setting that uses the stark cues around it. But it does kind of point out the problem of the challenge of designing a building in a context where the contextual building to which you were attaching just isn't very good. It is itself a reduction of the buildings around it. And you can only make that move so many times and then you run out of things to material to work with. You know, things such as the, you know, changing materials when you get to the top story. It's modestly successful on a four-story building, but not at all successful at the scale of this building. But the effort's right, you know, and I think, and I like the idea their approach of trying to give it its own character and not trying to make it, not trying to make it go away, not trying to reduce its character that the scale it is, it's going to be its own thing, you know, and it it will not read as an addition to its, to the building to which it's attempting to to be an addition. But I I think that's the road to go, I think, to to look to its own character. And I think actually ironically, one of the most successful buildings at the slide presentation is the retirement home across the street, which really handles some of those challenges of of getting tall and breaking into bays and pulling fenestration into pairs. And really, it's quite a successful building in many regards. And so I think there's a lot right here. There's a lot to build on. And I like a lot of the moves that are being made, but it just, as my fellow commissioners have said, it needs refinement. It needs to really be, I think, thought of as its own, to become its own thing. And and I and I look forward to seeing the next iteration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Wright, please.
Yeah, I I would say much, many of the same things. It's it's sort of like an ungainly maiden aunt right now. And 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 it doesn't necessarily have to be a star building. I I I mean, if you don't, I'm assuming that the program requires all the square footage that those pediments are, you know, those raised pediments are taking up. But if that's, if if, and so if you're stuck with that, the 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 only others suggestion I would make in addition to what Mr. May was talking about was possibly mitigating some of its its bulk by giving the the facade a little bit more texture and depth. Like the, a window reveal will go a long way, for example. Just to to break up some of, you know, it's it's it's, it is, it is sort of reminiscent of those late postmodern buildings that basically kind of got, they were, it was so reductiveist that it kind of looked like oh, what's the word I want to use? But I can't think of one, but very flat and and two dimensional, like a building on paper where the contours of all of the of the architectural elements were there, but they had no depth and no gravity and no, therefore, no meaning. And so I would, I would revisit your vocabulary a little bit if you can. And I agree, you're you're, I it's not nearly in the same boat as what we looked at in the last meeting. I it it, I think it's got potential, it's fixable, but it but it but and you are suffering from having to riff off a building that isn't very good. So maybe, maybe stop doing that and and think about a vocabulary that doesn't, that that speaks to the vocabulary of the other building, but doesn't necessarily riff off of it so directly.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Dixon?
Just I shared a lot of views of my colleagues and I have no further comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Cash?
I just really want to associate myself with the comments about the design. I mean, I, we keep talking about that there's some relationship to building twenty five, but the thing that I can't get over is it looks like it's a bigger residential version of the parking garage next door. And I know the parking garage was in the master plan. We can't go back fifteen years and fix all that. So so we're left with a site where we're left with. But I do think that that some of the views, as I'm looking through these slides, like it's actually a really prominent spot to put something architecturally more interesting, like the top of this kind of artificial hill above the field. And it just, I mean, I'm getting very suburban vibes when I look at this. And I also have to say, when I first look at this, I live in the Thomas Circle neighborhood and there's a Homewood Suites right at Fifteenth and Massachusetts. And this just is screaming that to me. So I really think that we should use this opportunity to maybe put something more interesting there, something to kind of break up the nineteen nineties monotony of this campus and and I was Commissioner Green mentioned the Arthur Capper Campus. I think that we need to look to be more creative like that. There's other neighborhood contexts, not just within the fence. So I understand the programmatic needs, but it would be nice to see something a little bit more inspiring in this neighborhood that's really taking off. So that's my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Cash. Commissioner Commissioner Davis?
I have nothing to add. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Steinkasser?
I have, I have nothing additional to add, except that my, I do want to state my agreement with all of the comments, both in the staff report and in as stated here with my other commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Steinkasser. And to close, I would just like to say, you know, we all acknowledge this is a very important project. And we appreciate the service of those who will use the facility. And I appreciate the staff comments and commissioners' comments. And I hope that it's provided some additional input for for you all as we move to the next the next phase of this project and move forward with the design. So I just want to again, thank everyone for your comments. Commissioner May?
Yeah, I I just wanted to pick up on something that Commissioner Green had mentioned about the senior building directly to the west. And what I find interesting about that is not so much that, you know, stylistically, an approach like that would be appropriate. But it's the idea that that what is happening in that building is that they have taken forms that are typically associated with smaller buildings and applied it to a larger building in a way that really looks good. And I I it's 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 got these echoes of of, you know, small Tudor houses and things like that, which are just, you know, really they're like, you know, the comfort food of architecture. And and but then to apply that into a building that's that big, I think is, you know, that it was done very well. And and so I I, you know, I think that there are lessons to be learned from that. It's clearly not something to be imitated directly either, because that would be a weird mismatch. But I I think that was a really insightful point and I I I wanted to drive that home a little bit.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Are there any other questions or comments from from the commission? Any further comments from the commission? Hearing none. Ms. Coster, could you confirm the motion and call the roll, please?
Thank you. The motion was made by Commissioner McMahon and the second by Commissioner, excuse me, Vice Chair Hewlett. With that, Commissioner Steinkasser?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewlett?
Yes.
Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
And Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Coster. And the motion is carried. This concludes our open session agenda. Our next regular commission meeting will be held on Thursday, June first, twenty twenty three at one PM.